Hello, welcome to the.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to the January ninth meeting of the Rutland School Town School Board. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with an approval of the agenda. There any additions, deletions, or changes?
If I could, I'd like to add Fred on to the agenda. He's our forestry person for the town. And apparently there's a project of some sort, he'll explain it to us, that encompasses a very small part of the school property. So he would like to speak to us. So if I could add that on to the beginning maybe of new business.
Sure.
That's, I'm sorry, Fred Nicholson.
Any discussion? All in favor of at, of the agenda with that change?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. I'm going to credit Lynette with that motion. Okay. So next up is teacher, staff, and community comments. Is there anyone online or?
Hi.
Kristi?
Yeah, I have a few. First of all, I'm, I'm Kristi Lazon, formerly Kristi Murphy. And I taught here last year and have a son here for those of you who don't know me. So I just want to say thank you first of all. It's really exciting for me to see things happening again now that COVID seems to have been like at least under control for the most part. So it's really been exciting for me to see that the kids are getting out and doing things and that there, there are things happening in the building. So I just want to start with that. And then I just want to follow up on, I was here, I don't know, maybe a few months ago about recess concerns. And it's still an issue that I would like to continue to explore for how we could get that block of time, those thirty minutes for those kids to be outside. I know that I've heard from some students and parents that there are two times only that they go out for ten minutes and that there has never been thirty minutes, or not very frequently has there been a total of thirty minutes. And I just continue to say that there are just so many valuable reasons to have those kids outside and playing, even as they get older. And it was also brought to my attention, so I'm speaking on behalf of folks who can't be here, these particular things. The amount of time that's spent in front of a screen, Lexia and Dreambox are the math and the reading, writing programs that I know the district uses. And there, it's been brought to my attention that folks are feeling like it's too much time in front of a screen, given the fact that many children are on screens when they're at home unfortunately. So that's been brought to my concern. And then the concern about not enough free time. And I'm thinking that goes along with the recess, one full chunk of time. They're ten and eleven year olds. And then another concern that was just brought up, the worry that field trips might begin to decrease because some parents are worried about the budget and wondering if that, and I, this is, this is just a parent who's just curious about this, that already there aren't a lot of field trips at the fifth and sixth grade level and that, and that perhaps next year those would be even more limited. So those are just some things that have been brought to my attention from community members. And I still stand really strongly about the recess issue. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
Anyone else online? Seeing no one, we'll move on. Next up is old business to discuss the flooring and doors for the handicap accessible doors.
Can I ask that that be postponed till after budget?
I was going to suggest the same thing because I think we need to look, leave that into the bunch of discussion. So we'll discuss that later. Is that all right with, with the rest of the board?
Mm-hmm.
So then we're on to new business and we'll start with Fred.
Thank you. Rather interesting that you're talking about behavior incidents. I wouldn't be on this sheet. My name's Fred Nicholson. I've got four grandkids in the school building here. Just by way of letting you know, I do have an interest on what happens here. I'm also the town tree warden and most of my issues are dealing with hazard trees along the highway right of way. But by statute, I have authority over any public tree, which is any tree growing on town owned property. It was brought to my attention the other day that Green Mountain Power is going to be replacing a section of the pen stock, which carries water from Glenn Dam down to the Mill Village Station, generating station there. And a small portion of it is on the town school out back here. I haven't visited that site yet. I'm not sure whether it's part of the original town or part of the recent purchase. But it butts up against the pen stock. This is the only paper I have, but if you, school sets over here somewhere, this is Sanborn. This is actually Chesanna and then Sanborn down to here. This is the pen stock runs up through to Glenn Dam. This piece here is on the town forest. And unfortunately, Green Mountain Power jumped the gun just a little bit. They'd been on site cutting about an hour before I showed up, but there was some confusion. They thought, the town officials thought they had given them my contact information and the right people never got it. So that's the way it works. Anyway, the piece on the town is a very small piece, just a few hundred square feet at most. Like I say, I haven't seen it, but it is not a very big chunk. I have no idea if there's anything of value on it. But I know this piece here is, you can pass that around if you want, so everybody knows where I'm pointing at.
The red, which part is in the Rutland Town School property?
Just a little, little.
Just that little circle right there?
And like I say, it's just a few hundred square feet at most. The part on the town forest is maybe a quarter of an acre. There is on the town forest section. But some of you have been here well know that we had a timber sale on the school and town portions of the Northwood Park here probably five years ago. And made some pretty decent money off it. So the timber that is left there is either young or really, really nice. And there is some nice timber in that little quarter acre that has to be sacrificed. The purpose of the project is to replace a section of the pen stock and to get an excavator in there and then a crane to swing six foot diameter by twenty foot long pieces of pipe out into the bed. It's just inconvenient to try to snake them through trees, so they'd like to eliminate them.
It'll be interesting, Fred, because when we, when we went down and we had cleaned that out, okay, after we brought, bought that property. Just, I, I think the main concern here would be not so much what they take out, but that it's clean when they leave.
On the town forest section, they are chipping all the brush, all the limwood. And the trees, the lobs are being left on site for whoever to do whatever with. I know on the town forest park, I'm talking with a local mill owner here in town to saw boards that could either be stockpiled up at the town barn for future projects or whatever. And there'll be a couple of quart of firewood that I'm sure that we can find someone in town that would be worthy of, if they got a pickup truck, they ain't gonna pick it up on the side of the road over there. Excuse me. Like I say, what's on the town or school portion, I have no idea. I haven't been there yet. But I hope to be within the next day or two that I can get back to you. But the issues on the town side are much more Act two fifty. Green Mountain Power and their operation with the pen stock is exempted. The town isn't. So we have to get a minor application in as quick as we can.
Concerning the watershed or?
Two fifty just exerted jurisdiction. Logging is exempt under twenty-five hundred feet from Act two fifty. But their position is this is not logging. This is.
Per se.
This is, uh, land clearing for, at a totally different purpose. So.
It's not, it's not as if we went, when we did the previous project.
No, 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 we.
We cleared it out, we got money, whatever. This isn't, it's so like I said, I think cutting it isn't so much, but because we have opened that all up and there's a lot of trails in there, they hide.
There is a trail involved in this according, I was talking with Don Terry O' about your trail that does cross over the pen stock down there somewhere. And he, he said something about possibly relocating that a little bit, but they would take care of any construction and relocation. I think there's a jag in the, in the trail now. He was talking about going straight over the pipe. So.
Who would?
Someone that goes to Grove for, is that?
Over to, yes, yes. Who would, who would do that now? Would Kelly be involved in that or?
To, to do what?
Okay, that, when we went, cleared it all out, we've got the trails back there. When they come in and they have to take some trees down.
Yeah.
To get in there and replace some of the.
Yep.
Duck work or whatever.
Yeah.
Who would look at the, who's the best one to look at? I mean typically we just give him a go ahead, but we've never had like work being done. So I don't know. That's why, you know.
I, I have no idea. I'm looking, I'm looking at you Lynette, like.
I know, I know. We haven't had work, work done. It's always been clear cutting or?
Yeah, and we had work done about eight, seven, eight years ago by Stafford, the forestry teacher that with us. Actually, he came and we applied for a grant and they did some work around our trail.
But if, they say they have to move one of our trails.
Right.
So instead of having a jag, which I think would be better, it would go straight across, they'll take care of that.
Right.
You know, I'm not afraid to go ahead and tell Fred, just oversee it. I mean, it's not something we can stop.
It has to happen.
It has to happen.
So I don't.
Right, but he's going to need the board to sign off because it's school board property.
And it has to happen.
The, the replacement of the pen stock itself has to happen. But cutting of all the trees, no. It's just for Green Mountain Powers contractors convenience.
Yeah, it's not necessary.
Well, not, maybe not.
They have, they have a sixty foot right of way, thirty foot either side of the pen stock, center line of the pen.
Katie was gonna comment on this.
I would like to know more information. I mean, I feel like you haven't even seen.
No, I have not.
And we haven't had a chance, but we don't meet again until pre-town. We can't wait till February. These people are already cutting.
That's not our fault.
Right. No, no, but I'm just saying we can't put it off. It's not really.
They want something before March. They want.
I want to know like where they're cutting, like.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see.
How much? I think Katie had a comment on there too. Let me Google.
Well, she's been studying birds too. So just right, checking out and making sure that it's not taking habitat down.
So I, I can get with Don Terry O, who was with Green Mountain, and walk that piece down there and do a quick timber cruise, see, identify species and, and value and get a rough idea of actually how big the site is. And I can get back to you with any recommendations that I might have as a, as a resource manager. And they won't be happy, but they're gonna have to wait on the town section anyway for the amended.
Two fifty?
Minor application to two fifty to come through, so.
Are you planning Tina on us meeting at five thirty pre-town, just the board itself, before we go down?
We wanted to go through.
I mean Fred could give us an update then. I mean, because it's not going to be that entailed.
Or we could meet after.
Right.
Because unless everyone wants to stay around for.
You rather meet first? I'm sorry, Billy, what'd you say?
Oh, I was saying, because we go first.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so, um, no, it's up to you.
It's the twenty-third that we're meeting?
Yeah. No.
Can I just request, Fred, our head of maintenance is Kelly Treya. Could he join you?
Yes.
In that? Can I give you his contact information? I'll write it on that behavior sheet for you.
We want you to take it home and study it.
Seventy-five years ago, I came into this world feet first and held up as a good example of a bad example ever. I see no reason to change really. Oops, that's yours.
Thank you.
And then we can discuss it. We can meet afterwards too. And six is hard for everybody to make, so five thirty will be the worst probably.
I work that day, so it's gonna be, it's cost to me sometimes to get here by five thirty.
That's fine. And then he can just give us an update. Kelly will be there. And Katie might even be able, if it's a free time for her to join for the walk.
I can try to.
Did you want Kelly at pre-town?
No, 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 I'm talking about when you're doing the walk.
So this is school number nine?
That's the school number, correct. And that's his extension. And let me just write my name down as well.
Six. Town meeting is seven. Pre-town it isn't, that's the one thing the state hasn't demanded us a certain time yet.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think I'd rather do that.
Awesome. So after pre-town, after the board goes, the school board goes first this year. And we're gonna come back in here and we can listen to what your update and we might be able to make a decision.
So that'd be seven on the?
It, well, the pre-town starts at six, so it'll probably be like six thirty.
Probably. We're not usually on too long.
The agenda says pre-town at seven, so we gotta.
Well, we'll check you out.
That is incorrect.
That's what I was thinking.
The date?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Two weeks from now.
Okay.
All right. And I will let Green Mountain Power know that nothing's gonna happen before the twenty-third.
In that, in that little bubble. They have lots of other stuff to work on.
Thank you. Fix the lines that came down the other day, you know.
All right. Next up is warning and warning locations.
So this was basically just to confirm that the format that's been used in the past couple of years, that we continue with that same format. What we will do is once the budget has been approved and we know which articles we'll have, Kristi McGinnis will then put those in and then we will need to meet to approve, make a motion to approve the warning. So I know Wells Springs is holding a special meeting. It's a five minute virtual. We can have virtual meetings up until January fifteenth, twenty twenty-three without a physical location. Anything after that, we have to have a physical location place. So just something to consider with that. So I would not, I would not advise and approve a warning without seeing all the wording with everything. So I think even if we approve a budget tonight and have the articles, we still need to go back and kind of work through it and make sure there are no typos or spelling errors or things along those lines. So, and then we could just, we'd send that out prior to our next meeting, whatever that'd be. So, and it does take twenty-four hours to warrant a special meeting, so it could be pretty quick as well.
Well, and if we come to a budget tonight, we can always sign it on the twenty-third on pre-town.
Correct. We just would have to, we'd have to, we'd have to take a look at the, the thirty-four day window. I think.
That's not pushing it right because I.
Twenty-six is the first day we can.
Right, so we'd be fine on twenty-third.
So that way we wouldn't, there's no rush. And if you want me to look over anything, let me know. Yeah.
And then the warning locations were just to confirm what we have on our reorg doc. It's just, I know that last year we had placed all the warnings in Rutland Herald and some of the boards were not happy with the cost. We just want to make sure that we're still fine with our normal warning locations as well as if we would put something in the Rutland Herald. If the board still wishes to do that, then we would do it on your behalf, if that's okay.
I don't think there's any reason to go to Rutland Herald anymore. Nobody reads it.
I think people read it.
You hear fur.
And I also think it supports the local paper. I think it's a twofer.
I guess if you want.
I don't know. I, I personally read it almost every day.
That's fine.
I know not everybody does, but I think a lot of people do because I, I hear people out and about saying, oh, I saw this or I saw that in the paper when they're talking to me about it. I don't know. I just think it reaches, you know, it reaches some people there, it reaches other people online, it reaches other people in town offices.
Are we sending out our flyer?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's the most important one for the warning. But otherwise it's school and town hall and.
Do you know how much it costs to put in the Rutland Herald?
I know that you may have seen this a couple of months ago, that the G R C S U had a one page spread. And we were only charged seventy-five dollars for that. That may have been a special deal that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely.
For us. So I, I.
Usually a few hundred dollars.
Last year was between three and four hundred dollars.
I know when I put a letter into the editor, the, just a small letter was seventy-five dollars. So.
So does that go under communications? Where does that go on the budget line when we do that? Or advertising?
Like board, board expense.
Yeah.
So it's up to the board during what they want, like to do, so.
Oh, it's fine. We keep it as is.
I agree.
So, yes.
Okay.
All right. Next we have director's orders.
I'll make a motion to approve the director's orders as warned, that everyone got in their emails.
Thanks Lynette. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous. And approval of the minutes from twelve twelve. Any comments? I had a couple.
Wow.
On page two, under RTS exterior lights, there was, there should be a was there, some discussion regarding perhaps the light being inadvertently left off the night of the, instead of the concert, it was the cocoa with Santa. And then under the ID scanner, parent volunteer, it's just a little grammar, middle of the paragraph is, should say there have been previous complaints. And then on page three, middle of the second paragraph, embedded should be spelled with E, not an I. On page six, under policy E eight, the last line, it's just missing some words. It should read, the comma should be removed and the word and should be inserted between victim and family. And then on page nine, Tim's name is misspelled under number twelve, motion by Tim. Do I need a motion for the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes with corrections.
Thank you, Billy. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Uh, you know, I don't have a lot. I know that this time of year really is the main point of this, this is working, budget finalized as well as preparing for town meeting, informational meeting. So I, I do want to remind those Rutland Town families that have been interested in this strategic plan that meaning has been pushed back to March, March sixth.
March ninth.
March ninth. I was gonna confuse, it was February ninth to March sixth. Thank you. So that's, that's really the biggest thing for us is just this. So, you know, except with December break, it's good to see everyone back. But like I said, now we get into the busy time of the year, which is getting the, the budget through and town meeting. And then we move to March reorg. And as I said, do a couple of amendments today, that we're already starting to wrap up this year, begin preparing for next year. That's kind of how schools work with. So it's pretty quick moving, so.
Do you have any questions for Chris? Moving on to principal's report.
Well, it was about eight days when this was due, eight school days, so it's a little bit brief from our last meeting. Good evening, everyone. We're excited that, as Kristi had said, we've welcomed back some, some things that we've had in the past. So not just mystery readers, but we had our senior luncheon, which was a big success. I received many compliments from those that attended. Student council was planning for a dance for February, but there was low participation in that. And I've received emails from a few other principals in the area that other middle schools are starting to have dance. So I would, I think with athletics and other events, I was like, oh, you were planning on the same day as us, so that would explain. So I believe the student council is looking at St. Patrick's Day for the next one. But we've had a couple of great dances, which have been fun and well attended. Teachers have started to meet with myself and Mr. Gross to go over their mid-year reflections for goals and formal observations for those in the formal observation cycle. This week, we are back at it with testing, with map testing, Fastbridge and Sabers later this week. And we sent an email out earlier today just to be mindful to teachers about with these testings with workload and other assessments, just be mindful. Dare graduation for fifth grade students will be celebrated on the twenty-fifth. So the fifth grade students, dare is a little bit different for those of you, at least when I was in school, what dare looked like. There's a lot more encompassing. So Officer Angie has a ten week program that helped them resist pressure, of course, to drugs and alcohol, but also about making good choices, responsibility, decision-making, risk-taking, et cetera. So there's gonna be a graduation in a few weeks. Last week, I didn't put in my principal's report, Officer Washburn and Officer Angie spoke to our seventh and eighth grade class about human rights, which was nice to have them both visiting Mr. Patterson's class. We are always looking for substitute teachers, especially nurse substitutes. And Marie Gilman is still looking for staff for Rutland Town School Tapestry Program if anybody is interested. Those positions are posted. Building matters, one of my favorite things ever is our gym being refinished. It's just a thing. Oh, it looks so nice coming back. This skating rink, we're hoping to get water put down on Wednesday. We were thinking about doing it. Kelly was thinking about doing it over December break and thank goodness he did not because it probably would have blown away due to the storm that we had. The new water meter was installed and the, all the floors were cleaned over vacation as well. Upcoming dates, we do have some field trips. Fifth grade starts Starbase. They started Starbase preschool field trip. They head to Wonder Feet. We have early release this Friday. We have in-service this afternoon. No school for MLK Day. Talent show, so excited about. There may be a surprise. So anybody that wants to come to the talent show, be there at seven o'clock. Pre-town meeting, as you had already mentioned, is on the twenty-third. And Oliver Best Curriculum Night is such a wonderful event. We're gonna have some teachers, and I'll put it in the newsletter, we're just solidifying where teachers are going to be. So we'll have a mock spelling bee in the cafeteria. There'll be pre-K K grades three and four and some other teachers in the gym. And then I'll let other, there'll be some teachers in their classroom. So there'll be a variety of things for parents to come, come see and visit. So I'm really excited to bring that back because it's been a few years. And that's it. Oh, I should say, Mr., we had a, Carrie Shelton was our wonderful long-term sub for PE and health. And so she, her last day was Friday and Mr. Rowe came back today.
Oh, good.
Oh, and last but not least, I apologize. Our preschool teachers wanted me to mention that the Brown family donated ten sleds. So thank you to the Brown family that donated ten sleds to our school. Now we just need some snow.
Yeah, well, we're not getting it this week. It's supposed to be forty and rain.
Yeah.
Yeah. And our, we did, the last time the fire department, they've been so good to us, doing a number of things. They had filled our skating rink last year, but they didn't hold the hose, so it banged and had a few, got a few tears in it. So Kelly finished patching that up and it's just, it's just a waiting game. This weather has not been great, so.
Forget all the rain they're talking about Thursday, Friday.
They may not even need the hose.
They may fill up itself.
But my skates are sharp. They're sharpened. They're in my office. They're ready to go.
Awesome.
Shallow pool. We have a shallow pool.
We have a shallow pool.
Okay, moving on to personnel. We have two resignations. David Kelly, custodian, effective January sixth, which is last Friday, and Teagan Waite, who's a first-grade teacher, I think, this year, effective at the end of the school year, fiscal year. So, I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tim.
TM.
TM.
Yeah.
Oh, TM. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. And then, we have some contract recommendations for Trey Hood as a custodian under support staff. And then, under extracurricular, Beth Coglin and Sean DeBois for licensing board members. And then, Amanda McIntyre, yearbook advisor extraordinaire.
I'll make the motion to approve the recommendations.
Thank you, Lynette. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. There are vacancies for the GRCSU is in your packet. Is there any comment on there or questions? Moving on.
So, with this custodian, I saw that the sign out front, are we still looking?
No, I need to, I was waiting for board approval because it's unofficial, but he did start today.
Okay. In your packets were the minutes from the SU meeting. I just wanted to highlight that we had a long discussion on policy. We decided as a SU board, we're going to continue with having a policy committee. We're going to continue with having two members from Rutland Town serve on that committee. They do not have to necessarily be on the SU board. We're still talking about changes of how we approve policy and whether we're going to look at approving a whole book and then just revising and looking at policies that come up throughout the year, or do it similar fashion to the way we're doing it now, possibly going through the SU board first before coming to the town local boards. Nothing official was decided on that note, and I think we'll have a little bit more as we go towards reorganization. Some more decisions on that. So, that was kind of the big thing.
Unbelievable how long that one discussion's going. How many months?
Yeah. Well, I think part of the issue is that none of the policies had really been looked at except for new policies.
Right.
Because COVID kind of threw a wrench into the merger. And so, Eric, who, Montrian that leads the policy committee, has really done a great job of looking at all the policies and trying to give them, each one its due process.
Yep.
And then, at the same time, we're getting a lot of new ones. So, there's a lot going on, I'm sure. Billy knows because he's on the committee. So, we're trying to get through that whole pile and then kind of deciding how we want to deal with it going further, I think. So, thank you for serving on that committee. I know it's busy. All right. And then, the next thing we have are the, just our quarterly board goal update. We have five goals. I'll just read them again so that the public can hear. The first goal is to increase culture and connection as evidenced by behavior decreases. The second, which I believe we've met, is evaluate the pre-K structure and decide if it meets the needs of the community, which as a board, we decided it did at this time. Number three, to take a proactive approach to building safety and maintenance to create a five-year plan. Kelly's been helping with that five-year plan, and we have been working at safety and maintenance by making sure our lights are working, among other things. Number four is upstairs planning and usage involving the community. We are planning to meet in February, I believe, and we're trying to set a meeting. Billy had mentioned before that he'd like to be involved on that committee, though he won't be the board liaison going forward past February. And Jeff is also supposed to be on that committee, who is not here tonight. So, it's kind of hard to set a meeting time. So, I'd like to add that to the agenda at the pre-town meeting when we get together. Just try to set that up for February.
Yeah, shouldn't take long.
And Sarah, you have had, you have a lot of old plans for the upstairs.
Yeah, we've given, I think, all of them to Louis.
To Louis.
Yeah, but if he needs any, Kelly has those.
I've never seen them. I would love to see them at some point if we could.
The floor plan?
The floor plans and what's been done in the past. Maybe if we could have that for the January twenty-third meeting, if that's possible.
That list will be short. There hasn't much been done.
Right, exactly.
Right.
But I believe, but we were still waiting to see what was going on with the elevator and getting, whether we were going to get drawing. I think we had said we wanted drawings done for the elevator because in order to do the bid again, which we had voted on, we wanted the bid done again with drawings. Has that, has any work been done on that? No? Can we please get that in motion?
Were you going to reach out to at our last meeting, Louis, you were going to touch base with Kelly because that was your recommendation after the last meeting?
Yes. I think, we did talk after that meeting, so. I don't have a status update on that.
We have an update for next meeting. So, we'll do an elevator update next time.
February?
No, in the January twenty-third. Because that's important to know for the planning, I think. Right?
So, I think we want to traditionally, January twenty-third is really not a full board meeting. It's simply a quick board meeting.
So, added to February is what you're saying?
Next regular would be February.
Well, that's important to know, I think, for the planning committee, so we'll have to figure that out.
So, both of those items for February?
Yeah, sure.
The other information maybe, besides the elevator update, which we'll do in public, the other information would be helpful to the committee whenever they decide to meet. So, if they decide to meet February fifth, they, it would be helpful to have the, what has been done before and the floor plans that have been done before for that group. But they won't meet before you're done all your budget stuff.
I was going to say, all this budget stuff.
Yeah.
And our next, our next meeting is the thirteenth of February. It probably should be the planning committee, or the committee should meet after the thirteenth. I wouldn't want to.
Right, well, then it wouldn't matter. Then it would be that meeting, but I don't
Right. I'm just saying with Louis, I wouldn't put any more pressure on him until the budgets are all set.
But they'll be set, they have to be set by January twenty-sixth, right?
Right.
So, that's what I'm saying. It could be February fifth or February, whenever they decide to meet.
Yeah.
And then, the last goal is the continuing increasing academic quality as evidenced by improvement in test scores and an increased usage of MTSS. So, Sarah has prepared a little behavior update for that.
So, thanks to Al Gregorich, our data guru for GRCSU. He helped create a similar slide with behavior data last quarter. So, this is very similar. So, it's again comparing last year, this timeframe to this year. Again, our focus has really been on those structures and routines for students. So, as you can see, for two thousand twenty-three, there's been a significant decrease, which is great. Some things that we're doing is bringing parents in earlier with smaller infractions that come to have those conversations with parents and with students. So, the first one is specific incidences that happened. The second ones are incidences by location. The next slide is incidences, incidents by days of the week. And the last is incidences by hour of the day. And I know that last quarter, we looked at the three o'clock thinking, what's happening at three? It was detentions. So, when a student serves detention, that's why it's logged at three o'clock.
So, is that removed this time?
No, we kept it because that, now I know what that three o'clock is. That means that incident was served. That's when it was there.
So, how does this compare to last quarter?
It's, I didn't compare it from last quarter. I compared it from last year. I can.
And the, I don't know if it was just a mislabeling of the dates, but the last page, where it's the hours, it has the first quarter dates.
Oh, yeah.
What the heck goes on on Tuesday that has everybody geared up?
I don't know. We've.
I can see Monday or Friday.
I, yes.
They're too sleepy on Monday.
Yes.
We're absent. Who knows?
It's just funny that Tuesday just stands out.
I don't know if that's a typo. I will have to find out.
It definitely seems like there's less going on this year.
And I think, again, we don't include those students that may have more incidences with a special program or plan in here. But I think across the board and in the country, where everybody has seen an uptick in behaviors and the needs of social, you know, socially and emotionally supporting students.
Well, I think last year was the main culprit, and that was that. So, they've almost had a full year, and now they're coming into another year. So, things, it just shows that things are getting back to normal and they're becoming humans again instead of animals. So, you know what I mean?
And I think one thing that we have seen is the, you know, the technology. So, that's why we had brought John Halligan in. I'm working with Officer Angie. We are going to have another assembly in April, twenty-eighth. And it's how to keep students safe on social media. So, I think one of the things in talking with parents and with students is almost this technology addiction, especially with phones. So, we're, you know, in talking with other principals and all, not just in Vermont, but kind of in New England that I have contacts with, it's a problem. It's, it's a huge problem. And so, we try to, you know, in our middle school, we will say, seventh and eighth graders, we take their phone, we'll put them in daycare, we say. So, put them in a shoe holder or some location. And we always say, you have a device with you. There's a phone in every room. Your parents can get ahold of you. But for, it's really shocking to hear and see how many hours students, a lot of students are on their device. And then, heading to the high school, some local high schools where it's not monitored at all, it's all day, and kids are really struggling to pay attention to teachers, to learn.
I know Rutland's having a heck of a time. And they do have a policy. You're not supposed to be on it, but it's a constant thing up there.
Yeah.
So, our goal is to, of course, create a safe and comfortable learning environment, and we want healthy kids.
Sarah, what would bullying per se fall under? Because I keep looking, and it's like disruptive or inappropriate, but that's on the school bus.
Danger to others?
There is one for, that one wasn't in here, but I can tell you how many, I can give that to you next meeting.
Okay. I just out of curiosity.
How many bullying investigations and how many of them were found to have been bullying?
Okay. Yeah, that was it. That's the only question I had. And of course, playground's always athletic field.
Yeah, and we always see, you know, during those unstructured times, during passing, during lunch and recess, it's always, that's when the uptick of behaviors happen, right? You have more kids, less adults watching, and it's unstructured.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll look at HHB's compared last year to this year, right, so far? And I, I think that's just a typo on the dates at the top, but I'll clarify.
And then, the next time, it would be great to compare.
Throughout the year, too. Yep.
I know that they've been using MTSS since the beginning of the year, but just seeing if it's helped more, too.
Yeah, and we have, I mean, we've followed an MTSS model, Rutland Town School has since I started here. So, we have a very strong educational support team. So, it's just more structure to it, I think, and it's the SU approach to it, so.
And then, as far as the academic quality, I know that you're doing map testing this month. So, next, in the February meeting, if we could have a, I think we looked at the dates and it looked like you would be able to.
Yeah, because we have map testing this weekend. I didn't know if Lisa or Al come to that.
We could have Lisa.
Okay.
We don't need Al.
Okay, I, he came the last time, so you just let me know.
That's right.
Okay.
I'd like to see that. I think I'll follow up a little bit more on the academic part of it.
Okay. Do you want me to reach out to her?
I'll talk.
You will? Okay.
Tell them, tell her for our figure of March.
Okay. The thirteenth. So, would you like to look at map data from, like, growth from fall to winter or from this year to last year?
Oh.
Okay.
How about you guys?
I want to make sure that this trend is continuing for the educational part.
Anybody else moving on? So, we have two second-read policies. One, the naloxone administration for opioid overdose, E eight, and then F twenty-six, students who are homeless. Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve EA and F twenty-six.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. And then, we have three first-read policies. I'll take them one at a time for discussion. D one, personnel recruitment, selection, appointment, and background checks. Other than formatting errors, I didn't have anything substantial. Did any, anybody else have anything?
No.
Okay. So, there is, on page two, under selection, there is just a missing space between character and professional. And then, on page three, under appointment, there is an extra space between the information from one and two and three. And then, there's no spaces for the rest of them. So, either take out the spaces or add them. I don't care which, but they should be.
As long as they look the same, you know.
Yeah. But that was it. And then, on F two, anyone have any comments? Search and seizure of students and property by school personnel?
No.
F twenty-one, admission of resident students. Any comments there?
Oh, no.
I just had one quick one. Under the residence criteria, should be, shall be on the student and/or their parent or guardian, just to kind of go along with how we're trying to get rid of the his or her pronouns.
Now, the procedures that go with this, Sarah, is that going to pretty much remain the same? This is admission of residents, children.
This is a big one.
It is a big one. So, and it's well-written. This says it all. But where we find that we run into glitches is if a student is here and then the parents are moving but building, do they finish the year, not finish the year? Is that a board decision? I'm just because in the past, under procedure.
That actually is in the admission of non-resident students. When a family moves, we have some dates in there. Typically, it's anything prior to spring break. The policy says no, but anything after spring break, we say yes, but that's typically probably to be moved forward.
In April.
Correct, spring break.
And that's for.
That would be admission of non-resident students because when a family moves, then that child is seen as a non-resident at that particular time. So, when.
On this policy, it actually talks about change of residence.
Right, right. But there's one about in there as well, so.
I know in the past, we had like different lengths of time that they may not be in the town. They may have to rent a place elsewhere, and then they come back in. It, that seems to be what all of our problems. And then, you got the state that just says, as long as they come to school, why do you care? So. So.
I, I think one, and I've spoke to Chris and Tina about this. We've had people that have a purchase of sale and then it never goes through.
Right.
So we've had that in the past where they're, and the house doesn't close. So usually I go to Chris and then Tina, you know, just the one time this year said, yep, everything, the clothes went through, students are here, they're living here. But that's when, there was a year before where we had like three families that said, we're buying this house, this is where we're buying, and it never finalized. And so we were paying for students that never lived in Rutland, they never moved here. So that's just the same procedure that I follow, right?
Typically when it's after September 15th, we then bring that before the board for discussion. Because anytime it goes outside of policy, I don't have the authority to make a decision.
Well, such as year you do. Well, for change of residence.
Correct.
Yes.
Right.
It's like, yeah, the super term would determine, review documentation, determine eligibility if it's prior to September 15th. So if it's after that, really it should come before the board for discussion. Because as Sarah had said, that if a family, if things fall through and we're not, we're not going to receive any funding for that family, the board has to make that decision to keep that child for the year or do we just turn and say, I'm sorry, that's your, you're not a resident and, but that's a decision.
The economics nowadays, unless you're truly, unless you're homeless, trying to find a place to live in between is almost impossible. So that's going to play, I think, even a bigger part in what's going on. But, um, no, I thought it really went well.
So do we have the criteria for, so here's the criteria. So that's the intent to reside permanently within the district, okay? And we have those on our infinite campus when parents go to register. They have to show not just their P.O. box.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, it's been fun. Some of them are very creative. But, and the other thing is, even when, by the time you get it going, it usually, school will end, you've had that child. And even if they are found to be out of compliance, you will never see the money. We have never gotten, even when we've gone and won cases, they've never gone back. One student went, I think, three years to high school. We paid, never got it sent back, even though we proved that we were in the right. So sometimes we wonder how much time and effort. Thank you. I know that's not an easy topic.
Next up, we have finance and financial reports. There any questions for Louis? I had a couple little questions. First one to Sarah, I think, for the Rutland Town School Activity Accounts Payable. What were the shirts in memory of MORM for? What is that?
Which one are you referring to?
Um, it's this accounts payable. It's just what.
Listen, that's the game one.
From game one, it's like the sixth one down maybe, seventh one down. I don't remember any announcement about anybody or anything. I was just curious.
No, but there is something in regards to personnel that I would like to discuss in executive session that may be it.
Okay.
Okay.
But I will find out.
Thank you.
Yep. I think I know. It's a good thing.
And then for Louis, on page three of the expenditure report. I was just curious, the co-curricular wages. When do teachers get, is that where the stipends come from?
That would be non-athletic expenses.
So like theater, Rainbow Club, things like that? Because nothing's been pulled yet. Is that because teachers haven't been paid yet? Because we've approved a few this year, so I was just curious.
You have approved the contracts. If there's zero showing up there in the expense line, that means no one's been paid yet. A lot of those get paid at the end of the year. If there's activities that, some of them could be paid twice a year if, if, if the administrator so decides. We pay it based on the administrator or someone in the office will send us a sheet saying, these are the clubs that have been completed, make a payment. A lot of them don't get paid until the end of the year.
Yeah, we gotta make sure. And I think that's how, a couple of them have never been paid because the year comes and goes. We're in the next year and we realize that so-and-so didn't get paid. But it should be up to them to make sure they bring it forward at the completion.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get something from the, the school saying that the activity has been completed. Please make payment for the following activities. We don't make any payment without receiving something from the school.
So they don't get paid upfront. You gotta do your job. Yeah, we've kind of been burnt before.
And the disposal services on page four were over, I know that it's just a outstanding encumbrance, but it's over almost $9,000. Is that, is there a specific reason for that? Did the, did the payments go up or something or did we have to get, purchase something? It's on page four, under.
It's the last section.
Yeah, plant operations.
About halfway through.
I just, so the shirts were, it's, the kids, kids raised money and donating it in memory of Will Mormondo's dad.
Oh, nice.
So that should have been out of boosters and the money was deposited in there. That's what I thought. So.
So, that's what. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I'll look at the details and get back to you on that.
Okay. That was all the questions. And then next up is Louis', budget.
So the budget, so you received a fourth draft in the board packet materials that went out, probably at the end of last week. And then you received an updated fourth draft today. So on Friday evening or afternoon, I received notification that Rutland City, I received notification from another business manager who had talked to Rutland City's business manager, that they were increasing their tuition rate by 10%, which was far more than we had budgeted. If you remember last year, after we had approved the budget, we had received notification that they were increasing their budget, their tuition rate by 14%. So this is another 10% on top of that 14%.
That's unbelievable. Now, when does that, when does last year get audited, next year?
So the 14% increase, the 14% increase was for this current year that we're in. So that will be audited, as you said, the allowable calculations will be, take place in this, the next fall.
Right, okay. Yeah, that's going to be the interesting thing is to see if they're just backloading their budget by raising tuition rates. Or if indeed, they really are up that much.
So announced tuition rates are due to the state by January 15th. It's my understanding that the approval is going to the board at tomorrow's Rutland City board meeting. So that rate isn't final yet, but it's what is being recommended. So that's, they're recommending $21,000 tuition, which is the highest tuition in, in the area, possibly the state.
Yeah.
Louis, can I ask a question? What is the total increase that's being proposed?
To the tuition rate?
Mm-hmm.
10%.
10% total, okay.
So when we're looking at the expenditure report, Louis, why is the encumbrance so high for in-state tuition? Because if you look at what we're spending and what the encumbrance is, it's more than what you budgeted. Even with that increase. Yeah, for this year. When you look at the outstanding encumbrance and the expenditure, it's over 500.
Where are you?
On the expenditure report.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry.
The encumbrance is for 1.5 million. The budget line is for 2.5 million.
I'm talking about secondary expense for private tuition in-state.
Oh, private tuition, not in-state tuition.
Oh, that's private, okay. That went up high.
So when we, when we budget, we don't really know where the eighth graders are going to go. So we estimate, we estimate, a lot of them, we estimate that are going to go to Rutland City because that's where a majority of our students go. So without actually having the detail in front of me, I'd guess that we budgeted more that are going to Rutland City, Rutland City or other private, I'm sorry, other public in-state tuition schools. And that has not turned out to be the reality. There's probably more students that have turned out to go to private schools. So we're probably over-budgeted in-state tuition and under-budgeted in private in-state tuitions. And it's, it's just a.
Pay about the same.
No.
To private?
It's, yeah, depending on the, depending on the public school, they're about the, I mean, there's not a huge difference. You know, Rutland City is higher, but.
Right, so we might be paying less than Rutland City, maybe now.
Do we pay, so I always thought we pay the average in-state tuition to those students attending private. Correct? Okay.
Which is, I knew it was 17 and change.
17 and change.
Less than Rutland City is. So it actually is a CTS.
Well, that'll be next year, not now.
Right.
Yeah, we, I know Rutland High lost quite a few students that went from there to private last year or this year. But I'll, I'll just kind of give you a heads up. We have, I've been asked by a couple of different people. Number one, hindsight's always 20/20. Should have built the school before the city did. And if you remember back to high school. And then we would have, because we're approaching, what's the total, 3 million almost? For secondary tuition costs for Rutland Town? So the only way out of that now is to designate a school. And there would no, there would be no choice anymore. So we could always designate the cheapest, we could do whatever we wanted. But, but, and, and not that I'm suggesting we even talk about it, except I want you to know that the talk is out in the town. They're very discouraged. I mean, when you look at, last year was up 14. They don't know yet that they're looking at 10% this year. They're just looking at the overall budget cost. So I'm just throwing it out there.
Do you want some good news?
Yeah.
We're hoping to have three new tuition students next year. So we have three students coming to tour Rutland Town in February, which is great. So we have two students from Stockbridge, siblings went here. And we have another student from Pittsfield and we currently have a student from Ira.
Yeah, they were, they were towns that were going to join our union school, yeah. Woodstock, in fact.
Hopefully three kids that will attend, which is revenue that was not anticipated.
That's good. Unfortunately, we'll never, you know, our incoming tuition will never be offset what goes out because we're just.
But it's three more than we have now.
It is, and that's great, but we also have to make sure we have the staffing and it depends on what grades are coming in. You know the whole problem thing. So, yeah, no, I think it's awesome. Good girl. How is our, not that it, well, it does somewhat, lunch counts? Has anybody, are they coming forward to put in for low and reduced, just so we have the count?
Oh, no. We, I mean, Louis has, you know, told all principals to, you know, we had forms, we mailed them, we, Sherri's called families, we had a table set up for open house. Louis has told all administrators, please make sure you put this in your mailings and your back to, I put it in the back to school letter, more than I ever have. And unfortunately, a lot of parents, I mean, right to my face at back to school night was.
Something we've got to, and I understand it, but people, I don't think our residents understand when they complain about taxes and whatever, that the school would, how much the school benefits by the count. Right now, you know, you can't say, well, we've increased 25% on low and reduced income families because we have no proof, because they don't fill out that piece of paper, which really isn't going to affect anything except how much we might get from the state.
And Louis has definitely pushed that to print, please make sure, please make sure. So we have, we have, and I think the last year, I would say we had an accurate number when we had to charge for lunch, we were at 33% and I think we're below 10.
We were at 13.
13, okay. I think we were at, so Sherri must have gotten a few more because we were at like 9%.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I think the legislature has to look at that, especially when they're given free and reduced lunch. There's no incentive for families to do this.
We've tried. I've tried.
I know, and I'm not, I just want it out there.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Did you want to continue? Sorry.
So with that change, there was, so those were, there was two major changes or two changes since the fourth draft. The, the major one was the Rutland City one, which amounted to almost $146,000 increase. The other one was a, it's just a small update to the vocational tuition. The state released their six semester average, but it did not have a major impact versus most of that, most of the impact for the Stafford increase was already in, in the budget since the last draft.
This Rutland City tuition rate, 146,000, that's on top of the 3% we already put in, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have 110 students budgeted at $21,000. How many students?
110.
And Louis, what's our total high school count, 138?
Budgeted for next year?
Yeah.
We have 161 students budgeted.
161 for next year.
So 110 for this year and 161.
I'm, I'm sorry, no, 161 includes some of our other students. We have 129 for public schools. We have 21 for private schools. That's for next year.
Next year. And then the 110 was this year?
The 110 is just the Rutland City, Rutland City, yeah.
And that's included in the 129?
Yes. So included with the draft that went out today was on the last page, should have been your updated tax rate calculation. And we can go through that. So total expense right now is budgeted at $9,939,560. This is a 7.58% increase. Education spending is $9,603,127, an 8.06% increase. Equalized pupils, we're seeing an increase in equalized pupils, which is good news. We're currently at 526.36 pupils, which is a 3.65% increase. That does have a significant impact on your tax rate. Ed spending per pupil is $18,244.
Is that the set one now? They set that, that one's set. It's the property yield that isn't set, correct?
The equalized pupils is set.
Okay.
Yeah. There may be tiny fluctuations, but just fractions of a pupil. It's the best number we have today. So ed spending, 1840, 18,244 per pupil, that's a 4.26% increase. The, the property yield, that is the number that's still pending, but this is based on the Tax Commissioner's recommendation, 15,479. That is a 16.26% increase and that's based on the legislators using that full surplus that's currently sitting in the ed fund of.
Now, that's the, if they use the entire surplus to us, that's what it would be?
The $64 million.
Really? I would have thought it was higher, okay.
That's also taking into account other assumptions like ed spending statewide increasing 8.5%. Equalized tax rate is a $1.17 before the CLA. The CLA dropped by 12.43% from 96 to 84. After the CLA. After the CLA, the adjusted tax rate is a dollar 39, which is approximately 3 cents more than last year, 2.4%. Um, this budget does not reflect any of the cuts that we have discussed. Um, those have sort of were tabled, are pending until we took a closer look at some of the data we were waiting for, which was the CLA. Uh, CLA was the big factor we were waiting for at the last meeting, and then, of course, the, the whole tuition increase is kind of through a little bit of a curve ball.
Did you expect the CLA to?
We expected it to decrease, but not by that. That's pretty significant for, um, of a decrease. Uh, a lot of them I saw were decreasing about 7%. We did have one other town that decreased pretty significantly.
I did in Rutland Town because some of the homes here, oh my God, they went through the roof, the money the people got. So, I mean, Rutland City won't see anything like this, but, um...
Timoth did too. I was reading the paper.
Timoth did, yes.
Yep.
And that's why I also said to Pam this summer, I am gonna stop giving tours because I was giving tours to people that were in bidding wars with houses. So I'm like, I've given six families a tour, all with the same address.
Oh, my gosh.
It was like, all I'm doing is school tours, so unless you sign, then I'll give you a tour.
Right.
Yeah.
Or charge for tours?
Yeah, I should, I should have done donations.
I mean, that'll come, that'll come back around. I don't think the CLA will be that low next year, but unfortunately now we have to do a reappraisal. So because we're under. It's almost statewide, yeah.
Is it? Okay.
They all want to come to Vermont because we had the lowest COVID rates. Well, Rutland Town is definitely. Don't put me in that box, no better than that.
Uh, so the one other thing I will mention is, um, on tuition. So we did receive an invoice from Rutland City for allowable tuition for last year of approximately $70,000. However, it didn't meet the statutory deadline of December 15th.
Oh.
We received it at the end of December. So I did deny the invoice, but I just wanted to bring it to the board for discussion to see how you wanted to proceed.
Well, I think you did do the correct thing. I don't know if we need to discuss it anymore. See what it goes. Yeah? You, did you want?
No, that's fine with me if that's the board's...
Any other comments on that?
All we've got in our hands.
I had a question, Louis, about the pre, preschool tuition. We've spent, it looks like, and I might be reading this incorrectly. We are on track to spend over $60,000 this year. And then you budgeted 26, so is that because you know that there's less students out there that are coming in? Or is that hoping? Because back in '22, we even spent more than that. Sorry.
Page two of seven.
Page two of seven.
Page two of seven, and then I'm comparing it to the expenditure report.
Oh.
Preschool is one of those things that's a little bit unpredictable. Um, we don't have a lot of information as far as who's out there. So we're sort of just taking a stab in the dark. Uh, we budgeted 10,000 last year. We increased that by 150% um, to 26,000 this year. Uh, we did spend 30 last year. It is, it's just an estimate.
Oh, I think I would just feel more comfortable being at least what we spent in '22. I know that's not going in the right direction. We've, we're spending a lot this year, and I just don't want any more surprises, especially with, I don't know, how the rest of the board feels.
I'm okay with 26.
You're okay keeping it?
Uh, I think I am too.
Okay. Just makes me nervous.
There's other places that make me more nervous than that one.
Yeah.
The thing is, the tuition is a lot less, so an extra few students don't have a significant impact.
Well, it had, it has a 40,000 impact this year, or 50,000 actually, compared to what we budgeted, which is significant.
That's not a few students, that's a lot.
Yeah.
That's, that's, yeah, almost a whole year's worth of students. Is that right, though, that line? What line is, what page are you on for that one?
For which one? The expenditure report?
Yeah.
It's page one. It's the first block, fourth one from the bottom of the first block.
Oh, Jesus, okay. All right.
So I think, um, are you looking for a discussion?
Uh, discussion, if you want to discuss anything in open session, if you wanted to discuss some of the proposals that we made last month, um, then we could go into executive session and then...
Make a motion, go into executive session for possible, I don't know.
Discussion of personnel?
Yeah, it would be, yeah, it would be personnel.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lynette.